For those of you from the public who are here, I just want to say thank you very much for your understanding. We've had a couple of technical issues and we're a little behind schedule. We're still very glad to see you. With that, I would like to know if there is, if there was any public comment on closed session items? Seeing none, do you want to go ahead and let everybody know that we were in closed session until just now and that we did unanimously decide in closed session to approve an agreement with an employee in which the employee retires in exchange for two months' pay and a lump sum of $100,000? That was the only action that was taken during closed session. I just wanted to ask that you would join me for the flag salute. Salute, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is announcements. Do any board members have announcements regarding student or community events they wish to share with the public or prevent the board?
Mine is brief, absolutely.
Okay, mine is brief. So I found this local Chico ASL Sign Club that meets on Saturdays and so I've gone to two of their meetings to like really brush up on my signing and it's just been super fun. Yeah, so look up ASL Sign Club on Instagram.
Very cool.
I just, it's not an upcoming event. I just had the pleasure of touring McNannas site with Julie Hissell. I'm telling you, if you have not gone to the McNannas site, it is a beauty. It's a jewel and any parent who is in that side of town should be. If I had had a playground like that for my children and just the facilities are just absolutely gorgeous and Julie, thank you for taking me around and really public, you gotta go and see the amazing things that are at McNannas.
Excellent. Anybody else? Seeing none. Before we move on to item five, which would be items from the floor, I want to ask a quick question of the public. How many of you are here regarding La Crosse? Okay, awesome. Because of that, and we do, but I just want to hear from you, but I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I would like to move item nine, which is board member request to agendize, up to right now so that we can vote on that and you guys can have a better sense of where we're going before we have the conversation with the public. Is that reasonable?
I'll second that motion.
This is our first action of the day, so I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Olson, aye.
Mindy, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Okay, in that case, we're going to move very quickly here to item nine of the board agenda, which is board members' request to agendize. We have one item, which I believe was put on the agenda by member Hayes. Do you want to take it away?
Yeah, I am, so the members of La Crosse have come and spoken several times and part of the issue with being a board member is as board members, we can't really speak about anything that isn't on the agenda. Everything has to happen in the public view and so in order to get information from the staff about the feasibility, the viability, we need to have it agendized so that we can have a conversation. And so I have asked for it to just the potential, this isn't, you know, this is just being able to have a conversation. And so I'm asking the board, I would like to have that opportunity just to talk, to be able to get information from the staff and, you know, feedback from the community in order for us to make an opinion, you know, to have it at the full discussion.
Is that a motion?
So I would like to motion that it be a future discussion action item to have a discussion regarding the potential to add La Crosse as an extracurricular offering.
We have a motion and a second. Excellent. And for the discussion on this one, again with the understanding that we can't get into the merits of La Crosse support, we're just talking about whether to talk about it in the future. I know government is slow, you guys, I'm sorry about that.
Just, can I just comment? Okay, I just really want to appreciate the board for hearing this out repeatedly over the last, you know, couple of years and few months and I would love it. I just appreciate you bringing it forth so that you can have a bigger discussion around that.
And thank you for allowing me. There is always this talk for public comment on these items as well, so is there any, of course I have, do we have any speakers signed up right in mind? I don't know if I have my speaker list here. I do. There were some, there were some email, emails, okay, and I know we've already, okay. Well, are there any further public comment before we take a vote on this one? Seeing none, let's go ahead and have the vote. Now we need to have further discussion. We still have items for to talk about. All right, in that case, if there's no further discussion from the board, let's go ahead and have that vote. All those in favor of adding a discussion of La Crosse to a future board meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. And the opposed say nay. I just like your unanimous. And as for when that will happen, I do see that we have a discussion about, workshop, thank you, a workshop calendar on the agenda. I'm sure that will fit in there nicely when we get to that part of the agenda. That said, I would like to go ahead and move back to the regularly scheduled agenda. We are items from the floor, so if anyone would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda, we do have one request to speak from someone whose name was not provided. Anybody want to talk to that, come up and speak for a little bit?
Probably me.
So just seeing other rules, you have three minutes to speak on items from the floor. It's supposed to be non-agendized, so we can't respond to it, which is what member Hayes was lamenting earlier. Three minutes to get a warning at 30 seconds, just to let you know that we're getting towards the end of your term.
My name is Joshua Wilkins. I'm coming to speak to the board. Just ask that you all hear me out about foreign exchange students. It's come to my attention, unfortunately just yesterday, so I haven't had a lot of time to gather information, that the school district only works with a singular organization for foreign exchange students. And like I said, that may be right or wrong. I don't know yet. I wasn't able to get that information. I however, have been working with another organization. One of our students was, actually attended Pleasant Valley High School last year and did very well, made a lot of friends, made a lot of connections and I would like to see that continue. Last year, my wife and I hosted two exchange students through the Kennedy Luger Flex and YES programs, which if you haven't heard of, are sponsored by the US State Department. The YES program is specifically targeted towards approximately 35 countries worldwide. It's stated as strategic importance. These countries are typically of Muslim faith primarily and this program was started post 9/11 to help Americans make connections with others worldwide and help them see Americans as we are, not as maybe we were advertised. The Flex program is also through that same organization sponsored by the US State Department and it is, both are
Okay, I just really want to appreciate the board for hearing this out repeatedly over the last, you know, couple of years and few months. And I would love it, I just appreciate you bringing it forth so that you can have a bigger discussion around that.
And thank you for letting me. There is always this talk for public comment on these items as well. So is there, and we, of course, I have, do we have any speakers signed up right in line? I don't know if I have my speaker, I do. There were some, there were some email, emails, okay, and I know we've already, okay. Well, are there any further public comment before we take a vote on this one? Seeing none, let's go ahead and have the vote. Now that we need to have further discussion, we still have items we need to talk about. All right, in that case, if there's no further discussion from the board, let's go ahead and have that vote. All those in favor of adding a discussion of La Crosse to a future board meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say aye. I just like your unanimous. And as for when that will happen, I do see that we have a discussion about, uh, workshop. Thank you, a workshop calendar on the agenda. I'm sure that will fit in there nicely when we get to that part of the agenda. And that said, I would like to go ahead and move back to the regularly scheduled agenda. We are items from the floor, so if anyone would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. We do have one request to speak from someone whose name was not provided. Anybody want to talk to that, come up and speak for a little bit?
That's probably me.
So just seeing other rules, you have three minutes to speak on items from the floor. It's supposed to be non-agendized, so we can't respond to it, which is what member Hayes was lamenting earlier. Three minutes to get a warning at 30 seconds, just to let you know that we're getting towards the end of your term.
Very, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joshua Wilkins. I'm coming to speak to the board, just ask that you all hear me out about foreign exchange students. It's come to my attention, unfortunately, just yesterday, so I haven't had a lot of time to gather information, that the school district only works with a singular organization for foreign exchange students. And like I said, that may be right or wrong, I don't know yet, I wasn't able to get that information. I however, have been working with another organization. One of our students was, actually attended Pleasant Valley High School last year and did very well. Made a lot of friends, made a lot of connections, and I would like to see that continue. Last year, my wife and I hosted two exchange students through the Kennedy Luger Flex and YES programs, which if you haven't heard of, are sponsored by the US State Department. The YES program is specifically targeted towards approximately 35 countries worldwide. It's stated as strategic importance. These countries are typically of Muslim faith primarily. And this program was started post 9/11 to help Americans make connections with others worldwide and help them see Americans as we are, not as maybe we were advertised. The Flex program is also through that same organization sponsored by the US State Department. And it is, both are heavily, highly rigorous merit-based programs where they have to earn a scholarship to come here. The Flex program primarily focuses on Eastern Europe, parts of the Middle East and Central Asia. And those students are specifically here to become leaders in their countries as their countries develop. Specifically, one of those former Flex students who came here, and I don't know how long ago, is the Prime Minister Moldova right now. So I would like to ask that the board considers adding additional programs. And I understand there may be clerical error on part of our exchange program and not having things in last year. But I ask for some grace so that the students that we have coming this year may be able to participate in athletics and programs that are not available and charter programs. But I appreciate your time and I just ask that, that, you know, the board can be flexible and say yes to maybe a little bit of grace and change, just to bring new students and diversity into our community.
Thank you very much, bring this forward, I appreciate it. Excellent. See if we have time, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding an item from the floor? Seeing none, gonna go ahead and move on. Item six is the consent calendar. So our first order of business here is always to ask whether there's an item on the consent calendar that a board member or staff member would like to pull for further discussion. I mean, as in we shouldn't be tasked by some consent. Do we have any of those?
No.
I see none. In that case, I will ask if there is any kind of a motion regarding the consent calendar. I should say first, very public comment regarding anything on the consent calendar? Workshop. Motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
All right, we have a motion by member Robinson, a second by the president of the conference. Any debate or discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing the consent calendar, second by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent calendar passes unanimously. All right, on to the fun stuff. Item seven is a discussion, item 711, the discussion action item considering the continuation of resolution 1692-25 regarding emergency D.
Yes, so bringing that, this is another regular meeting, the emergency resolution related to getting DDA running, both on the temporary housing side, like the debuilding that was on fire, as well as clearing out, debuilding, getting it ready for, right now, all the contents have been removed, it's basically down to the studs inside. So all insulation, wiring, all of that. And then we're working on securing the roof at this point, kind of a secured tarp, if you will, so that as inclement weather comes in in the fall and winter, that there's not further damage at that point. So we are moving forward and selecting a contractor to get that work done. A structural engineer was on site to be able to help the architects with a rebuild and redesign base there. So between now and beginning of school, Julie and her team are continuing really fast to be able to have the temporary housing set up. And this resolution really helps us with that, because we're able to shorten some of the processes in what we're doing to reveal that happening.
Excellent.
So those, I drove by the other day, the portables on the back side of the air. Those are just gonna be temporary?
Correct. Yes. Until we get the debuilding ready.
It brought me back to the day when I first came to the meeting.
When I wrote.
Oh, exactly.
Yes, temporary, yes.
Temporary, temporary.
Yes.
One votes. Okay, thank you. So it sounds like with this resolution in place, there won't be any severe impact to the student experience of what they get in the classroom? I mean, things were happening, that was a fairly specialized classroom, a headache, you know, special equipment. Are we planning on seeing a big impact on what students can and can't do in these portables versus what they could do?
No, so a lot of the tables, we were able, some of the tables were able to salvage, cleaning those, those will go into the temporary housing for those students. The kilns were not impacted in any way, so those were all salvaged. We're gonna put a temporary kind of covering over by the portables, so the kilns can be installed there and the students will have to operate in a fair spot, so.
My big concern?
Yeah, minimal impact, it will be an impact, but minimal impact in many of those cases.
So the kids who are in art classes can still do the arts at their class.
That is correct.
That's what I care about.
Yes.
Awesome, that's great. Any other, sorry, hand hog the mic there. Anybody else have questions for staff on this one? All right. Is there any public comment regarding the emergency resolution? Is there then a motion, so seeing what's inside there?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the continuation of resolution number 1692-25.
Awesome.
I second.
All right, we have motion by member Robinson, second by member Hayes. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Have a big aye. I mean, you know, they might, they might be really excited about talking about the fire. Seriously, like, you know, I hadn't even thought of that, but, but get it, it's so incredible. We love having the public here knowing what's going on with the schools, especially as we're heading into the opening of the year. But I will stop talking. Next item is 7.2.1. This is a discussion, potential production regarding the school board governance standards.
Yeah, so we spoke about the governance handbook on the 11th, we went through it very well. There are some additional grammatical, well, we'll call them errors, or that we've found in the time between then and now. And then also things like, and you should have one handy there, on number, on page four, if you just turn to page four. You've got, let me know when you get there, most of our items in this governance handbook are bulleted. And bulleted and then just with regular writing. And in this particular case, there's, it's italic writing. So there are certain things that just are strange. And so I'm just asking you for your permission to just make some of these things look more.
Pretty.
Beautiful. What's the right word, consistent throughout the document. So nothing that, that we would change in this will be a, you know, a.
Substantive change.
Thank you, yes. And so if you're okay with that, then I'm just gonna do that, okay? You all right with that?
Yeah, I don't think that requires a motion any towards you.
I'm just.
You're gonna want to make.
Right, and I think that ultimately, as we go through this process, and I tell you some of the other things that we're talking about, somebody could eventually make a motion that, you know, of making a motion to approve it with the described changes. And then we don't have to bring it back, and I'll just provide you with an updated copy. So then we'll do that. And then, so one of the things though, that does require a smidgen of discussion is on page, sorry, there it is, 13. And it's the final bullet. It says, "If a board member is invited to speak to a community group or organization, they will make sure the other board members know about the invitation and will request updated district information as appropriate." And the question that was posed is, what are we talking about? What is considered a community group or organization? I mean, are we talking about reading pals? Are we talking about going to a PTA meeting? Or are we talking about some other kind of group? So this is, this requires a little bit of definition. So I wanted to just bring that to the group as something that was worthy of some consideration to figure out what the intent of this is. What are we talking about here?
The first thing that popped in my mind just now was that, and I don't know if this makes a difference or not, this says to speak to a community group is, is different in my mind than attending an event of a community group. Because if I'm attending, I'm just there attending, participating, but if I'm speaking to the group, I feel like there's a difference there.
You said page 13?
I have on page 13.
The very last bullet.
That's fine, here, under number 11, it's issue number 11, doesn't it?
There's no number of them.
See, we have, we don't have it in print.
Uh, you should. It should be in the stack of papers, did you not, is this your stack of papers?
It's actually on page 15 of the one on our, to send you a reference.
I, I.
Page.
The actual document of 15 of the item.
Cause there's, well, cause there's two, it's the page at the beginning, should, remember.
So technically it is.
Yeah, yeah, page 15 is on the digital version, page 13 is on the electronic.
Okay, now I have a page 13.
Excellent.
All right. That's, that's valid. I mean, this is really, this is, this is the governance handbook, I'm here to just bring up this item, this is a discussion. The first thing was if you're invited to speak, then that would be you're coming as a board member to speak at this event. Seems like, that's what this is saying, that would be the intent, not just participating or watching.
Well, I, I know that I have, and when, you know, way back when, when Kelly was our superintendent.
Way back.
Yeah. I, I was, I was at, to speak at two or three events. And I, I let Kelly know that I was gonna speak, but as we all know from the handbook, I wa, I made it very clear that I'm not representing the board. But if I'm asked to speak, you know, I'm not just attending. And so then, I think if you're asked to speak at something, it would be nice if the district knew that, knew that.
Any other comments? I think the goal with this, with so many of the things in the handbook, is just to make sure that we're all on the same page, right? Nobody at the board wants to find out, oh, one member of the board has been writing checks that the rest of the board isn't expected to catch, right? You're gonna go and speak as a representative of the board, then it's just glad to give a heads up to the handbook and if we're on, if they wanted to ask about X, Y, and Z, and I'm on that committee. Okay, great. But also, I would like to find a better way to streamline this language so no one feels like they have to look over their shoulder every time they're talking to a member of the board. But that's certainly not the intent.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm with you, and I don't have a word crafting recommendation, but it doesn't say that we don't represent the board. There's someplace in this document that does say we don't speak on behalf of the board. I think it's under the president's.
And given that, I wouldn't mind striking it all together, I'm not sure it would last, anything. What do you think, number case?
Um, I think I was just looking for what Irene was asking for.
Yeah, I, I think Katie, yeah, we'd be fine.
I would be up for striking it all together too, because it seems to me like if we're, if a board member is invited to speak to a community group or organization, they will make sure that other board members know about the invitation. I mean, then does it all, are we opening it up to say the board has authority to decide whether or not the, the board member actually has the right to do that? Or I mean, are we debating the issue?
Yeah, I don't know that we're debating it, but again, I'm not sure. Again, I would, I like to think that we, we give each other professional courtesy. And that if I'm invited, so if I got invited to speak, even if I was invited to speak, if, like, I was in fact invited to speak, and I didn't know about this, and nobody was, none, nobody was any the wiser, and, and I, you know, life went on, and I, when I read this, I'm like, oh, well, I didn't let them know that I was invited to speak. And of course, I stood up and said, I'm one member, you know, the board only has power as a board, and I am one person that, you know, you've asked my opinion, and this is how I feel about what you're asking.
Right, and I unknowingly have done the same, I have spoke at events, but I did make it clear that I was representing my opinion, not the board.
Correct.
Or the community board. So maybe having that disclaimer of when we, when we are invited.
Which is in your, it is in your, but then I have to, I have to take back what I said, because I don't, like, I spoke at events, you guys never knew I spoke at them, right? You're right, I don't feel a need to let you guys know. But based on where I was speaking, I just felt like the district should know that, that Greg should know, just hey, FYI. But again, I don't, it's not a permission.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need to share that with you. So I was, I was not reading further that it was like, let every board member know.
Oh, yeah, it's every board member, yeah.
For me, out of courtesy, I will let the district know. But I don't know, I would agree that that doesn't have to happen. I mean, to each our own, right? Yeah.
So we're taking it out?
You're making that motion to delete that bullet?
I move that we delete bullet one, two, three, four, five.
I second that motion.
The whole, all the bullets?
No, no, number five. She was counting.
I counted bullets.
I knew what you did. We don't need any.
You're crazy, it's a no.
No, just number five.
Fifth bullet.
Hey, can I ask that before we have a motion on the table, we go through maybe the entire, any other change we want to make? And we can come back?
That's a good idea, sure.
Make a motion with all the changes at the same time?
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's why you're the president.
The next page.
We got more?
See, if we've got, so we're on page 14 or 16.
Item 12.
Yes, item 12, thank you.
Issue number 12.
Third, fourth bullet. A willful violation of this protocol by a board member will cause the referral of that member to the grand jury.
Oh, I, I move we strike that. There is, there is a thing that mandates that we report a member to the grand jury, but this isn't if. It's not because of protocol, it's because of violations of the Brown Act. Correct?
Do you want to say may cause?
No.
And leave it? You just want to get rid of it?
Get rid of it, it's not.
And that's up to the board to decide.
Disclosure, but it's under issue disclosure of confidential information acquired in closed session.
Right.
That if you violate that.
I guess I would create a legal reputation here. Would that constitute some kind of legal breach?
Probably.
Well, I don't really, I don't have a lot of experience with this, so I don't really, I can't give you definitive answer on this. I'm not even sure how you'd be referred to the grand jury.
Through the, we're different DA's office.
Tisha, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I was just saying that I asked this question because I just wondered, I think that this has probably happened in the past, that there have, I, I bet you in the history of, of the district, that there have been times when confidential things were talked about. And I wanted to know, well, what's the history of it? When it says it will be done, that to me will cause the referral. It's like, did, is that when it happened in the past, that the president of the board called up the district attorney? Or somebody, who is the president, he's filled the names?
It's not the president who reports.
Then the superintendent, I mean, who, who is it? So who's calling the DA to report the, the near do well to the grand jury? And I'm just saying, is that what's happened in the past? Or is it maybe, I, I suggested the word may cause a referral. Just to, I mean, I think what the intention of this is, is to make, make sure that any board member, not just us, because this is going to go on past us, understands the importance of keeping confidential matters confidential and what could be a consequence. You know, the thousand dollar fine, or, you know, six months in jail, or whatever, you know, they, they put it, they put things in there as, to, to let you know what could happen. I think saying will cause then. I think saying will cause then, who's doing that?
Yeah, someone has to check every single time.
That's right.
Just a quick, a quick search, government code five, four, nine, six, three, Martin Brown Act, this section could give a board member from disclosing confidential information that's been acquired by being present in a closed session, which a person not entitled to receive. So that's the beginning of that, so that's the government code. So the question is, uh, a breach of that? Is it, is it a will or is it a may?
It says will right now, it should say may.
So the, right, so it goes on to say such penalties may include and not be limited to the following court injunction, and then referral of a member of the legislative body who has willfully disclosed confidential information to the grand jury.
So it says may, the government code says may, and not will.
Yes.
Are you making a motion?
I'll, I'll motion that we change the word will to may cause the referral of that member to the grand jury.
So item twelve on page fourteen.
Fifth bullet.
Oh, five. And, and I believe those are the only two actual, everything else on here was italic, italics, bold facing, um, a couple of, um, language changes, but nothing that changes the intent.
Did our bullets get numbered?
We weren't numbering those, but there are some, some areas that don't have bullets, that, to make it consistent, would have bullets, for instance, when we go along.
Number five, H five.
Page five, yes, right in the middle, we have this centered list of bold faced things, there's nothing in here that's like this.
Yeah.
So, we'll make that, we'll make that standard font, bullet it, it looks like everything else. The ones that are italicized, we make it standard font, it just looks consistent.
I do have one other thing. If, if people would turn to page ten, and issue number eight, bullet number two. Um, I, the little hash mark bullets under bullet number two, it says, we recognize that by using reply all easily makes. So this is what the fix for this, I, I, I bought it today. If we delete the word by, so that it would say, we recognize that using reply all easily makes email part, that, that works. If you have the word by in there, you have to redo all the little hash mark ones.
Tisha, show me where you're.
Sure.
This, I, I think we need to delete by here, so that it reads, we recognize that by using reply all easily makes email. You could, um, that actually reads okay, but with by in it, we recognize that by using reply all easily, you just.
Yeah, yeah, I, deleting by makes sense.
Yeah.
May I have any problems with that?
Nope.
Kind of stuck with you.
Okay, and then, one last thing, I just want to push back on something that we changed, and Erica kindly made it happen.
Right.
I just think underlining creates a public record is, is a silly thing to have underlined there, and I'll tell you why. Because regardless of whether or not you use reply all, email creates a public record, whether it's you reply all or not, and also, um, I don't think that that is anymore, in fact, I think it's less important than inhibits the opportunity for any other two board members to have a conversation, I hadn't even thought about that. But if I reply all, then now I can't even reach out to somebody and say, hey, what do you think about that? Because, because we're all in the threads, so, um, I, to me, that is as important as creating a public record, because all email cre- creates a public record.
So, remove the underline.
I'll make the underline, yeah?
That's what I would say, yes, I'd repeat the phrase. Yes, yes, I just, we added that underline, and Erica did it for us, I'm like, why?
We made that decision when we were hungry for it.
Maybe.
Well, on that, if I wanted to thank Erica, I know a while ago that our bio on website hadn't been, hadn't been updated for about six years. Um, so, thank you for getting that done.
And one last thing is on the cover page, just again, for, uh, uniformity sake. Um, if we're going to make these changes today, July thirty of twenty twenty-five, if you note, everything, everything up above either says adopted, or rev, revision, or review of the changes, or updated on, so I would just say that you would say updated on July thirty of twenty twenty-five, because everything else ha, tells us what happened on that date.
Yep.
Yeah, all right.
I don't know if there was anything else that I said.
Well, I mean, there were just a couple of.
I think it was just typos.
Yeah, a couple of periods and things like that. I mean, nothing, nothing's going to change the content. So, then the motion would look something like making a motion to approve the governance handbook with the
aforementioned changes.
Yeah, the aforementioned changes, something like that.
And since they're being made in the document as it speaks. I'm curious about the last one, did, were you talking about just getting rid of all the other updates? Because we couldn't, it's the last updated on whenever. I would think it's really easy.
Very reasonable.
I don't think that's what she said, she was just saying just say updated on, because the rest of them say updated on, or review, or whatever.
It's important to have those, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, please. It's important to have those when we made the changes dated, because we go back and look at actions that we took to see if we were correct. And if we don't know when the wording that we're examining took place, we can't judge whether or not we.
I hear that, but those dates are only useful if there's actually a list somewhere of what changes were made on which day. And eventually, the front page is going to get, this can become just a little text of every update that's been made.
That's a good point.
I guess.
And I've, I've often seen just a footnote that says updated July, you know, it's just in the footnote area. I understand your, I understand your position. Um, I don't find it offensive, I, but I also know that it's like we're going to have to start making this font smaller, because that's going to be supposedly we're supposed to do that every, every year, we're supposed to do this every year, so, you know, that's only from two thousand eight to twenty twenty-five, so, you know. It takes a.
Not this court's problem. Is there, is there a reason that you need to know any of that, like?
That's, that's Tom's point, I think.
Unless there's a running list of, at this adoption.
Is there a running list of all the changes that have been made?
I don't believe there is such a thing.
Yeah, unless we will get, sorry.
We do have meeting minutes from all of those board meetings, so they are posted on the website, if anyone wanted to see what the changes were made, they could go in. That's like meeting minutes from the archive.
No list.
No list. I have.
That information would still be available upon request, regardless if it's on the cover or not.
Right, right, that's a good point.
I have another question, do you have physical copies of the governance board, you know, do you have like, is there one that from two thousand and eight that there's, oh, this is the two thousand and eight one, and this is the two thousand and nine one, this is the two thousand and ten one?
If you're a board member that doesn't purge their files.
Then you have.
Have to confirm that, I can tell you we do have them from the last eight and a half years, prior to that, I would have to go back into the archives.
I was just curious, like, I, I have found it helpful, um, to actually have a physical copy, just to be able to go back and compare, but I would prefer having one physical copy to having all of this, this verbiage.
Yeah.
And it just simply say an updated thing, so you know that you're looking at the most current one. So, I, I would be glad to just put updated to July thirty of twenty twenty-five in a footnote, yes.
What's the difference between a footnote?
It just shows up right down here, like a, you know, kind of, you know, I don't, and it can be just on the title page and not on every subsequent page. You know, it's kind of like the page numbers. It could be in the middle, I mean, it could be, they could read them.
So just put it right there centered underneath Greg Blake, but instead of.
You could, whatever, that's fine.
And then that way it's not on every page.
Maybe make Greg being a little there.
Huge, that'd be stunning, yes. Bold face flashing.
Imperial fine.
Like, remember?
Erica, I think that was a joke. You're taking this out, put it in the center there.
So, are you okay with us removing just the updated last, thank you so much, okay, that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Exactly, that's the right answer, whatever. As long as we know it's the last version, you're okay. Um, awesome.
So you do need to take a vote on?
Yeah, yeah, so, who made the motion? I bet, I think it was Tisha who made the motion, okay? Did you make a motion?
The motion was made for the very first edit, there hasn't been one until the very end.
Oh, okay, all right, so do we have a motion at this point?
And, and sure it was needed, I thought I, I don't know.
What was for the first edit, yeah, but so we could just.
With all the changes.
Make a new motion, yeah.
All right, I would like to amend my motion to reflect all the changes that we just discussed, um, for the governance handbook, that they be adopted.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any more debate on this one? So unfortunately, the way this is worded, did you make, you made the first motion though, did, who made?
She amended that.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to all of a second here, just for parliamentary enthusiasm's sake. I wait for Erica to come who made, I think maybe it was Irene.
I thought it was, I kept saying it wasn't.
Irene, could we get you to hold that motion just back for a minute?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, withdraw my previous motion to approve the one motion that was contained in my motion.
Okay, um, with that, can we just assume that member A's motion's on the table, instead of saying it all over again, is that reasonable?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. If we all know what the intent here is, we have a second for, and it's A's motion.
I'll second it.
Awesome, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further debate on this one? Public comment? I mean, it's been fun. Thank you, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We're getting the hang of this local legislature, we're working on it. All right. Item seven, two, two, is really the meat of today's work, we are going to look at a potential list of board workshop, um, topics. Decide will be the members for each subcommittee to those topics, and decide on a calendar for the upcoming twelve month movement here about those topics.
So, we have some potential topics that were put on here before my time, with the, you know, so long ago, we're the former superintendent. Um, but we have technology and Chromebook usage, that was, uh, put on for September third as a potential date. Um, we have the school safety and school resource officers as a potential date for a discussion of October first. Um, and then we have CASP information on February fourth, we have the governance workshop and community partner services and support. Um, the group on May sixth, and then the LCAP on June twenty-fourth. So, right now, we have November fifth and April first that are open, if we keep all of these in the same locations and the same topics. That's all up for grabs at this point, other than something like the LCAP, which we need to have that there, so, please don't change that one. And I think February fourth for CASP is something we really want to leave alone, also based on staff input, um, when they want to be able to provide that information for everybody. So, and then the May sixth one is what we essentially decided on July eleventh to be able to revisit the governance workshop and what we're doing, how we're all working together in May. Um, so, um, if I may suggest something? I would, based on the, the topic that you just approved tonight, and having that discussion, I think it would be great to have athletic sustainability and the co-curricular activities, work group, get together and talk about that whole conversation, including lacrosse. To really give it the time it deserves and the, and the focus it deserves, and not having that conversation during a business meeting, let's say where we're, you know, talking about lots of other things. So, that's possible, I think I'd like to choose a date to do that and have that conversation going. It seems reasonable that we'd want to probably do that sooner than later. So, my suggestion would be to have it on October first, and move safety and school resource officers to November fifth. That'd be my suggestion at this point. And that leaves April first as a wide open topic choice. If you're comfortable with that, we could pencil that in, and we can just start deciding on our board liaisons and things like that.
So on this, um, currently, uh, this was suggested to be an October, um, date, and Greg is suggesting that this now be moved to November, and that the athletic sustainability, co-curricular, and athletic programs would be combined with the lacrosse.
Why is this not, like, if I'm talking myself, would we be remaining that?
Which?
The co-curricular and athletic programs, or is it just assumed that that would include the lacrosse?
I think that when we announce it, we'll make sure that people know that that's the night. If we want to add the word lacrosse in there somewhere, we certainly can, but it's the.
And the athletic sustainability.
Adding lacrosse is part of a bigger athletic discussion, so I think it really does make sense to have it as part of the whole sustainability.
Plan, yeah.
Yeah. So we can maybe rename it so it makes a little bit more sense, and we can reach out to the lacrosse people, the ones that have been really the, the drivers, and tell them, hey, this is the one, this is where you want to be talking.
Maybe I was just like, co-curricular, and what is that exactly?
Go ahead.
So, uh, co-curricular is related to, um, courses offered by the district, so, for example, um, if you had a, you have an arts, art club, and you had art classes, that'd be co-curricular. Extracurricular is in addition to any curriculum that the school district may offer, so athletics would.
Is that too broad for one topic, or, I, maybe I don't.
You could say.
Well, the reason that that's written that way is because that is part of one of the, that's the title of one of the standing workgroups, that's where that fits. But we can certainly, we could, we could. Yeah, we could decide it's just going to be athletics and just take the other thing off, if that's what we decide.
I'm not sure, maybe I just don't.
I just left a lot on that.
This is, this is one where. Potentially things.
Well, right, yeah.
Well, this is what I'm thinking.
And it does easily end up open to athletics, so I have these.
You're not wrong, but if we leave it in, does it feel like we're not, like, adequately addressing those? At this would be, we could also do it here.
If you're about, you, you're able to turn it out proven in other ways.
So you're saying you're okay with taking it off here, and just hanging, basing it on athletics?
I agree.
Okay, no problem.
Because we, we do.
And we can. And then, as we get a little bit further along here, I mean, or we can decide to write in whatever title we want, right here, right? I mean, so, or maybe we write adding, what did you just say?
I would say, I would just, I'm thinking of all the other sports out there that are involved in that survey, I would suggest athletic offerings. Our sports offerings, because the, that, and then you can, you would still be able to leave in the agenda, hide it underneath that.
Yeah, we just call it, you know, athletic programs.
Athletic programming, yeah.
What about athletic programming and sports offerings?
Programming would take care of the sports offerings, I think.
I like sports offerings because it makes it clear, hey, this is where we're going to be talking about.
And then that would be a standing committee, regardless of which group each year had an interest. It would be something that have to change each year by including the specific team or who just.
And we will make sure that the lacrosse people know this is the.
I bet they'll reach out.
And you do so?
They'll be up there with a message.
Well, they might be listening online. Well, they might be listening online. But I mean, that's good. I, I think this is great. I mean, if this is what you decide that it's gonna be, really good. And then, so, the, the district leads are not Mike Allen and John Shepherd. I think that would be-
Are you on, excuse me?
Yes, Mandy.
Are you on the annual and biennial standing workgroup page now?
Yes. No, no, no. We were, we were just using that title.
I'm lost.
Okay, we use the third, are you looking at the workgroup page?
I have the work, I have both workgroups and the annual presentations and board liaisons.
Yes.
Paged as our staple together.
Yes, on the workgroup page.
Yes.
Third item says CUSD, athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're making that workgroup.
Right.
We're taking that workgroup and morphing it into this October 1st
Oh.
presentation. So we can have a presentation on that day regarding sports.
I understand, but-
Okay.
The, the protocol, the standard procedure for how we use our workgroups, that, that, you know, the ones that go from here is they guide the workshop presentations. They meet with-
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
But if you're, if you're moving that entity to October 1st, you just, if you want that topic to be dealt with on October 1st, you just say that on the annual presentations page. And over on the, um, workgroups page, you appoint two board members that are going to act as liaisons for that presentation.
Okay.
I think we're back, we're backwards if we don't do it that way.
Okay.
So I think what we've done thus far is just changed the name. Instead of it being athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities, we are changing. So we are looking at changing it to athletic programming and sports offerings. So that's all we're discussing.
So the, the sports offering, that's a workshop topic. That's not-
Correct.
-a workgroup.
But the workgroup is involved in the workshop.
Yes, but you don't change the workgroup.
We haven't touched the workgroup page.
That's the problem, in my opinion. Because you, your, your cart be boring the horse. Whoever takes October 1st on to do athletic programs and offerings and, and all of that needs to be, board liaisons need to be listed.
Right, yes.
So are you saying we should do the board liaisons first?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, got it.
Okay. In that case, I can ask-
But, but first, do we need, because we changed the name, do we need to vote on that?
So we, the, the board workshop topics we vote on, but not before we've established our workgroups.
I, I, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding, Eileen. So, I, I see these as, so the workshops are things that we're going to, where we will, there will be two liaisons that go and work with staff, right?
We need to know who those are.
Right, I understand, but, right, I, I understand, but so workshops are on a variety of, and, and these are biennial standing workgroups, and so I'm not understanding what you're like, on this page too, there are no, no board liaisons listed, and also the district leads haven't been established. So, what I'm understanding is that we're trying to make sure that by October 1st, the item that is agendized for discussion, lacrosse and sports- Exactly, that, that's right, that we're trying to get that settled. And are you saying that that doesn't, that should not change the, this on the back? The athletic sustainability, co-curricular activities, biennial standing workgroup, as you're, okay. So, you're just saying we, we add a new topic that, of the athletic programming and sports offerings as a workshop title, and we, and we keep the athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities as is.
Yes.
That it's not morphing those languages, that these are two separate things.
Yes.
That we have a biennial workshop here and we have a workshop here.
But could we not agree that as a board, could, could we agree that we don't need that extra one?
We don't need what?
Um, that perhaps that if we're doing a workshop on, on this, do you need the standing committee? Is that what you're saying?
Well, standing, standing committees, sometimes go for two years, sometimes for four years. They, board members serve more than a year typically on one of those workgroups.
But, but, but I'm suggesting is that do we need to have a discussion and, or whatever else we need to do to decide if we need that standing committee anymore?
In my experience, the topic of sports resurfaces pretty cyclically. Yeah.
Correct, correct, but that's why we've had, we're having, we've been having a discussion on instead of having it be co-curricular and athletic sustainability, we, we update the title to athletic programming and sports offerings. Yes.
So I'm just wondering if for, for this year, if this would, if this would solve the issue? If we establish the meeting on October 1, right, of whatever we're calling it, doesn't matter, that then for the biennial, we wouldn't, we would just, we're not moving that biennial group. It's just, it stays there, but we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be filling, we're not gonna be doing it then.
This is why you'll name the board liaisons for that committee.
Sure, we can name the board liaisons, but we might not have, we might not have a meeting. There might not be any, there might not be any meeting with staff.
They have to meet with staff in order to design the workshop program topics, what's included.
Can I suggest that we, we kind of take a step back? And let's start with the workgroups. Let's look at this page. Can we start a discussion about whether we want these to continue to be the standing workgroups for the next year or so? Is that, we, can everybody kind of go connect?
It's a need.
Okay. So let's say, look at what we've got on the list right now. We've got standing committees listed, or standing workgroups listed for facilities, wellness, athletics, the community school grant, the superintendent evaluation, and board of governance self-evaluation.
Yes.
Does anybody see a need to either remove one of those or add a separate, different standing workgroup for an issue that is present now and we foresee being present for at least a year?
No, I think they're fine.
Well, I believe that we should add athletic sustainability, no, where did it go?
You want to talk on?
Athletic programming, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Athletic programming and sports offering. And I simply say that because, um, to have athletic sustainability in with co-curricular seems to be a very super broad thing, especially now when we're looking at what are we actually offering the students at various grade levels? And then to have co-curricular in with that as well seems to water, water it down. Like, it's, it's too big to have both of those things.
So, I mean, would you be okay with us, uh, as part of the motion we've actually made, changing the title back to just, um, athletic programs and sports offerings?
Athletic sustainability, yeah.
I need to, I need to check something, just real quick.
Yes.
I, I think that, I understand what everybody's saying, I really do. But the workgroups are not the titles of the annual presentations.
That's true.
And the, so, we can leave the workgroup, we could, athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities, and still have our programming and whatever. I mean, they are two entirely separate things.
Correct.
So, really, to me, the thing that most people are gonna be concerned about are what's happening on these dates.
And we're gonna get, I'm saying, I think-
Okay, and that's, they, because they're not the same. I mean, we have a wellness group, we have superintendent evaluation and work. That's not on here. You know, so I mean, that's the-
And they don't have to be completely related, um, but I do think that, um, the critique that members have made, which is that athletics and co-curricular activities is super broad, and if we're gonna have a standing workgroup, let's have, focus on something they can actually, you know, easily and nimbly address and make changes about. And I think focusing on that, on what it really is, which is sports, which is what you were talking about in the meeting, we might as well just change the name already. Is that okay?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have my key or need at this facility.
Tom, Tom is recommending that we get rid of the co-curricular activities here because really it's about the athletics.
Then you're wiping out junior high.
Junior high athletics.
Athletics, absolutely not.
They, they got a lot of co-curricular activities, the junior high that.
Oh, am I wrong?
I think athletic, whatever, we're, athletic programming for me, absolutely includes middle school. Absolutely.
You mean, you're talking about something other than sports as a middle school?
And what we offer at that level. It's throughout the district.
Yeah, didn't, John, didn't you give an example of the co-curricular activities?
Yeah, so co-curricular activity could be, if you have art class, you have an art club. Um, the art club governed by ASV would be an example of co-curricular. At the same, could be, yeah.
And I'm saying that I think you talked about having a, a meeting group that, that focuses on both sports and everything else we do is fairly broad.
Yeah. It is broad.
And you prefer to keep it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're chico-unified and we cover a lot of stuff.
We do, we could make that a separate, a separate workgroup.
I was just gonna say, it seems to be that, that what it would be would be to have a co-curricular activities workgroup.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're wanting to, while then-
Well, we don't have to have a workshop for every work.
We, yeah, we don't have to have, yeah.
And it also seems reasonable to me that if you have, you're having a conversation about athletics, if the athletic sustainability side of that workgroup comes up, or if you're having a discussion, a workshop about co-curricular activities, then the other, let's call it side, would, it doesn't have to be separate, it's plus the focus on that particular workshop.
Okay.
So, to Eileen's former point, if, if we, if we had liaisons for this group, then we know who the liaisons are for this, for October 1st. So who did those lead, if we did the, the standing workgroups, there may be a workshop that doesn't fall into any of the workgroups, right? But in this particular case-
If it is, you're plugging in.
The athletic sustainability person should be that athletic programming and sports offering liaison. Does that make sense?
So let's get our standing workgroups on the line.
So let's not change that title, that's fine. Can we go ahead and work on? Is everybody okay with moving towards standing liaisons to this point?
Yes.
Okay.
For the annual and biennial.
For the annual and biennial standing workgroups.
Okay, sounds good.
So, we've used different systems to do this in the past. Um, I think-
Arm wrestling.
Arm wrestling, um, is definitely one way. Shiny head is another way, when I want to get what I want. Um, no, but for real, um, is there, I think at first, I would just like to know if anybody has a burning passion for any of these.
Yeah, I do.
Oh, look at that.
We're gonna go from Dale one down, not out of any, just because-
We're just gonna put our desires-
We're just putting our names in the hat.
We put our desires up there.
So, um, can I ask, um, Erica, perhaps whoever's controlling that, there, to make a quick page of notes? We can see who's interested in what, or just type names in there as we go.
Yeah, I would do that.
Uh, remember, what, are you interested?
Well, we did it before, like, week number, um, do you remember that?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that again?
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
But we can, we have, have it this, have it if there's a lot of, if there's like overlap of competition, then we'll stop worrying about that. Let's just see if we can stick out the end of. All right, remember, what are you, what are you excited about?
Um, athletic sustainability and co-curricular activities.
Okay. If that is it, really? Sorry, I'm, dude.
You're not next.
I'm not.
No, she's fine.
Uh, remember, can I get anything that you-
Oh, I see, too. Is that okay? Or do I have to start with number one?
Let's go with one at a time, we'll just go around.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah. I'll take-
Which one are we doing right now?
Uh, which, which can I just say one, because it's our first choice for being a member?
So we are kind of number one.
I guess we are.
In a way. But we're all saying our number one.
That's right, exactly. Number one was what?
Okay. My, my priority, I guess, at this point would be the school safety and SRS.
Well, we're looking at the, um, the, it's just a standing workgroup right now. You'll be on that one, I'm almost fine.
We didn't do this.
Uh, that could be wellness, though.
It could be.
Sure, we'll call it.
I think, since you're on many sides, and you have, that also makes some sense, right?
We're about that.
By the way, you're also on superintendent evaluation.
I know, I saw that.
Congratulations.
And board of governance.
Okay. I think my number one would have to be the facilities plan. What first to say is I love that community school conversation. You have facilities, alright.
Tisha?
Uh, facilities.
Now we find out, did we just accidentally block somebody else?
Robinson, facilities.
Okay, Robinson, my facilities also, okay. Um, we go back to remember, is there another one you're super, super excited about?
Wellness.
Makes sense?
Athletic sustainability.
Just a team, I can't, I don't know. Community schools for me.
And community, I mean, community schools for me. And your number two, Eileen?
Oh, number two.
What would you like, or what?
Uh, the community school.
They don't have to be. They have been by tradition, there's no law on it.
Oh, it's just tradition.
Yeah.
That's okay, I guess. How many do we get to pick?
Uh, two for now, because now we're all, we're all booked up, unless somebody is super excited, I'll take another superintendent evaluation. I would, I would give that one up.
You have to do that.
You have to.
Yeah, I know. It is, right, it's in the government, okay, but you shouldn't say that.
It's gonna be so easy this year.
Right, these gold stars across the, alright, um, so-
So I have two that have three.
Yeah.
So, uh, facilities and community school planning grant has three folks on it, right? And they're actually all the same people.
Yeah. Um, I am totally willing to take my name off the community schools one. I have been waiting patiently to get a shot at the facilities committee, and I would really appreciate being a member of that, but also-
The community schools?
Uh, no, I would, I think I'm-
Tom would really like to do facilities, because he hasn't, he hasn't had an opportunity to do so.
In the past, it has been presented as, um, against something that, uh, the president tends to be, um, which against, not a reason that we have to do it that way. And it doesn't end up that way, that's okay too. In fact, you know what?
So that would lead for community school planning grant, Tisha and I. If we take Tom.
Yeah, we're gonna go do the facilities one.
We'll go to the facilities, yeah. Review again, Tom would really like to be on it.
But also-
Whatever, leans into, in a review, willing to not be on that committee. I mean, I'm ready for a rock and scissors.
Names in, names in a hat. Pick, pick, Tina picks a number between one and a hundred. No, you have to write it down and then we make a guess. Um, I would really like to be on facilities. Um, again, uh, like, like you, I haven't had the opportunity to do so. You know, coming on as a new board member, there were very few that were left, and we were, you know, Kelly's made suggestions about which ones we were on, and that was fine, I mean, that, it is what it is, but I would like an opportunity to be- I would like an opportunity to be on facilities. Um, but, you know, if I wasn't, it's not the end of the world either. But it would, I, I would appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Does it entail? I mean, the reason I ask this question is, is it possible that three people technically could be on the committee, but only two attend a meeting at a time? I'm just asking a question, I don't know the answer.
Jaclyn's wait, not shaking her head.
Yeah, there's a lot of consecutive meetings, especially with the facility master plan and going into community schools.
Yes.
Um, it's a, I would say, of the work groups, it's a pretty significant time investment.
Yes.
Um, meetings that Julie Kissel and myself host, so, um, to have three, only two attend, then you're only hearing part of the information, and much of it's, it's...
You have no idea what happened at the other meeting that led you to...
To making a decision today.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Without continuity, of attendance at the meetings.
Um, okay, well, I'm gonna let, I, this is not a Greg Blake decision, this is a board decision, you, you all have to, if you wanna wander that for a few minutes, we can talk about the other side of this piece of paper, and we can figure it out if we want.
To speak about remaining on the facilities committee, I've been on the facilities committee since 2013, when we began to examine the facilities master plan. So, I was involved in how we did the scoring of the different schools, how we decided between what was a large school, a middle school, a small school, um, the inspection of all the schools and the ranking of whether the school was, um, still functional or not. It was probably four to five hours, sometimes longer, per meeting. And I think we did two a month for a while. When we pulled all that stuff together to publish our facilities master plan, we had had community, again, always at night, and quite lengthy, so we were having a number per month. When we finally adopted the facilities master plan, that was when we went out first, uh, on to begin to finance what we agreed with the facilities master plan. We would build, change, upgrade, fix, you know, then we had to finance what we put in the facilities master plan. And of course, as soon as we got started, we had to change it because we didn't get enough money, or, you know, it was a constant going back and reevaluating where things were in the facilities master plan.
Well, I tell you what, I will withdraw my name. Um, I, I really do, I mean, Tom, you've been on the board for six years now, is that right? And you haven't been on the facilities, I, you know, certainly, um, can put my time in, um, so, I, I think it's important that, like, if that's, if that's your number one, I'll withdraw my name. Um, and then, because I'm only assigned to one thing, I didn't know whether you or Rebecca would like to, I mean, you can't, you can't bow out at the superintendent evaluation, but Rebecca, um, but I don't know if you have to be on the board governance and self-evaluation. Like, if one of you would like to, like, relinquish one of those, I'd be...
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you guys decide where I'm going, and I, that's where I'll go.
So, is there, let's see, look in the handbook, go back and see, is there a, uh...
A thing about board, board governance?
Yeah.
The self-evaluation?
That was at the back, right? But the board, the board self-evaluation. Board president.
As people are looking, Tisha, I want to tell you that, you know, I would be glad to keep you very informed and updated on what's going on with facilities. I mean, I was just, you know, I said, hey, let's, you know, you're interested, we appreciate that, we'll keep you going.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna bug Julie Kissel and go walk properties, and he...
Which is great, Julie.
And he, and he's saying that there's gotta be, we, we've gotta find more money for a citrus to get new lighting and flooring, 'cause it's just gotta, gotta happen.
Where we are with this.
That's not, that's not a bad thing at all, so, I mean, I just, I mean, I really, I mean, I, I wanna give credit for me, so pumped about it. That's, yeah.
It doesn't say who, though.
What page are you on?
I was on page three. I'm not sure if that's the right...
Erica, are you, do you have any idea what, as far as the board, that self-evaluation, what, what our responsibilities are? Just that we do it once a year, is that what it is?
Page three, that was seven.
In the handbook, it says that the board will, on page three, like, that Gail said, perform that, but it doesn't...
And it doesn't say who?
I think you did good, man.
Okay.
Historically, I think it was just a determination by the board because of the way that the election and everything fell at the time.
So, you, you guys get to roach and vote and see who gets out.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have that team regardless. Are you, are you super excited about being on there?
Sounds good.
You have it.
No, I'm not. I feel like the president should definitely.
That's a good one, I mean, all right.
Okay.
Self-sacrifice there.
All right, Mando and Rex. Rebecca, I'll keep you informed.
I'll let you know which one you want. Which you chose the self-evaluation.
The governance, yes, yeah. All right, there's that.
Do you want me to finish filling you in on where we are in facilities first?
Not right now. But in the future, yes, before we, before we get to the first of those meetings, absolutely, I would love that.
Because we're...
Okay.
We're going over the three, the triplets, and their, their plans and designs, and the architects are meeting.
And I will reach out to both you and Julie before we have that meeting. Okay, yeah.
There's a lot more than that.
Oh, true.
You can't, you can't get caught up if you weren't there.
Well, we'll go...
We'll make sure everyone's going in.
Yeah.
Thankfully, you can jump up to the top now.
Yeah.
Get our dates and, and topics, so...
We already did dual I-11.
We did check, check, one done.
I have one, a checkmark by it.
Um, and then the board liaisons for the technology and Chromebook. Uh, the person that brought it up, I think was you, right? Okay, and then...
You want to be on that one still?
And I also, um, I, I'm just saying, I met with members of the community and recommended that they go talk to LCAP, and so, I, I didn't agendaize it, 'cause I didn't, you know, I wasn't picking that up, I knew, and I didn't. But, yes, I would really appreciate that.
So, if we put Tisha on there, does anybody else feel super strongly that they wanna be...
Rebecca did.
Well, yeah, we have her on there.
Okay, but that is good, so on the September third?
Yeah, Rebecca.
Rebecca.
And Tisha.
Okay.
Okay.
And good, good there?
Mm-hmm.
And we like the date, so we're good there?
Yeah.
And if we talk about, maybe, sports October first.
Yeah, and so, John and Tina will be the people for that. And then we'll jump down to October first. And the board liaisons are going to be...
Well, that's what I was wondering, am I by default automatically there? Um, 'cause I, I also would really like the SROs, and I don't know if we're limited to two.
Understood.
Yeah. That was kind of my main priority. I mean, I could do three in this situation, um, but I don't know if that's...
If you wanna do three, I'll just do one, 'cause I have four on the other page, I find, I, absolutely. I know the SROs definitely under your sitting.
And then under district lead, you could have John on there.
So, November five, that's going to be Conken and Lando, and...
What?
The pop, the school safety, or is it just Rebecca?
Well, I thought it was, that was what I thought.
What?
Do you have anything being one of the liaisons for the school safety?
Are you ready?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, so November...
I, I will.
So, you wanna be on November fifth?
Has been changed to school safety?
Yeah, that'll be.
And it's Conken?
Handels.
And... And... And, and who were the, the leads for that? Uh, is it still Allen and Shepherd?
I think so.
Correct.
Yes.
And then athletic programming, that will be...
Maybe you're on TV.
And the liaisons are gonna be Gail, Gail and Rebecca?
What, what page are we?
Uh, October one, this one.
That's the athletic.
Right.
I think we're all, I think she's just getting her notes cut up, and we're all, we're all done with November at this point. Do you have notes, are there anything till November?
November what?
Do you have anything up to November 12th?
No. You guys have...
Sorry, so what are you missing here?
This is what I...
September third, topic is technology and Chromebooks, and that's Rebecca and Tisha.
And November fifth is the SRO, and that's Rebecca and Gail. Uh-huh. And October one is the athletic programming, sports offering, and that's again Rebecca and Gail. And then...
I'm sorry, the date again?
October one.
I got that.
Okay, I remember. Okay, then, then you are all caught up, you're caught up with us. That's all that we have, or that's all I have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we do not have workshops in December or January because of the weather. So, we pick up again in February fourth. Uh, right now, we're looking at using that to look at CASP data.
Right.
Uh, I would really like to be a liaison on that one if it's possible, but, you know, for other people, really.
I also like, I would love to do that, so...
Yeah, I, I, I love the workshops, and I get lots out of it, but I don't wanna be telling Tim Karas what he needs to put together to make, you know, he, he just, he does such a great job.
And then we come to April...
Not one of my strengths.
We come to April first, which is our blank spot. So, you could either look at the standing work groups, or at the other list we've got, which is a list of potential workshop topics. Does anybody have, I've got the element to review those, of course. Does anybody have anything? And I wanna hear from staff also, if there's anything that you guys think that we really need to know more about, like, I see school boundaries are up here, is there gonna be a huge shift in school boundaries that we really need to talk about? At a polling poll, I don't know. I don't, that's not on my radar if it is.
Well, I think that these, correct me if I'm wrong, but these were developed by the board.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, now that they're out there, if staff knows something's coming down the pipe that we, I, that we really need to hear about, that would be great news. 'Cause we got a lot of topics and one place to put it.
Well, somebody had suggested community partners and service support, and I still like that topic.
We were gonna fold that into May, along with the board governance.
Yes. I still...
As part of board governance.
Okay, I think that's nice. And then, we're looking for April.
Yeah.
I think, um, artificial intelligence is going to be a huge thing, I don't know.
April, what, what topic, Tisha, are you saying?
Artificial intelligence and, hold on, I'm, I've, this was, I'm not, this list of, I, they're impossible to suggest. I don't know. I'm not tied to it, I'm just saying that it's in, in a lot of the CSDA stuff, it's in federal legislation. I just think, um, I think John has, John Vincent has found out some important stuff to share. I think it'd be who must know something more about it.
And I think that I have my little, we could also tie that into the overall intent plan, and make that one, I'm, possibly?
You mean the CASP one?
No, no, there's another one, yes, by the way.
Oh, I see.
Those probably want one workshop, right?
What, artificial intelligence is there?
With, with educational technology, by the way.
And, and...
Are there any other topics yet? Please.
Um, mine might be, like, super low on the totem pole, but, in my opinion, incredibly important, and that has to do with dress code. Um, as a teacher, I was embarrassed by what I see the kids wear, not only in middle school, but in high school. And embarrassed when we have foreign students coming onto our campuses. It, it's, and, and, I know the teachers and staff are like, what am I gonna do about it? The male teachers are like, well, I can't report that person, you know, so it's a real dilemma, but it really, it is bad. It is really bad. When I go to a middle school last semester, and a girl in a tube top with super short shorts, the first two buttons undone, and folded down, and this much of her stomach showing, I'm like, ooh, that's not even talking about butt cheeks.
That's not.
But it just, that's the environment, that those, that those kids are gonna go, going to get an education, and you think that they're going out on their first date. And I'm not just talking about penis, I'm also talking about males.
You made what you said. Sorry.
So, I, I agree, it's appalling, and I think that it invites the board to weigh in on it. So, what has, what has happened stereotypically is dress code violations have, have disproportionately been applied towards young women and not young men, and that young women have been spitting at higher rates because they've gotten multiple dress code violations, and because they've, you know, it's like, this dress code violation, this dress code violation, and then, so, as, as we're ratcheting up, um, the, the discipline, you know, so it disproportionately affects our young women and not our young men. Whether or not, you know, that's, that's the way that, um, so, I would, I, I would not support having a workshop on dress code, unless it's to educate us on the pitfalls of having dress codes. I mean, the only kind of dress code that I, that I think would be, um, beneficial is to institute school uniforms, where everybody wore the same thing, that's it.
Do you have one dress code that you can't wear, something that...
With drug, alcohol, and so... Uh, but, but that's, that's also violated, I'm telling you, you could look, it, you, you have cookies, and cookies is, is referring to drug-related paraphernalia, but it's also become a major, like, brand, and so, it's, it gone out of the scope of being drug paraphernalia to, like, more mainstream, and yet, that's what it is. And there used to be, like, Skin Industries, um, T-shirts and, and sweatshirts, and it's like, kids don't understand what Skin Industries means, they don't, they don't understand that this is actually, you know, sex trafficking, and, you know, kidnapping usually young women, and sex trafficking them, they don't know what Skin Industries means. And you see it, and, you know, and then you have the Sierra, the Sierra Nevada beautiful artwork sweatshirts that simply because they're a pub, you can't wear them. So, it's like, I see, you know, Cookies sweatshirts that, to me, have no intrinsic value, and Sierra Nevada, which is actually a homegrown, you know, billionaire, and the artwork is lovely, and we say, this isn't okay, or this isn't okay, but this one is, and I just go, nope. And, and Gail's right, men can't comment on, on young women's clothing whatsoever. Even, even for women teachers to comment on it, it becomes problematic.
And so, maybe not a board workshop, but it is a problem.
So, let's...
It's a huge problem.
So, potentially...
And it, it's a reflection on the district.
But potentially, agendaize that for, for later discussion, I do, one, I make sure that I'm getting too far into the lead on things that I... make sure that I'm getting too far into the lead on things that aren't specifically on, on the agenda. But I, I mean, I hear you, I, you're not wrong.
I know we have all, like, received emails, you know, from the public, um, from time to time, I'm just wondering, um, like, are any of these topics on here common themes that, um, that you've, like, that parents or, or community members have reached out and wanted attend, like, wanted to see the, the board address? I, I mean, nothing is really jumping out at me other than the ones we've already
Do we need to know more about our after-school program?
I was gonna say, that's probably those. That, that probably is the one that stands out, just the need for more and
Those have been, like, you've talked to community members and, okay. I mean, I think that's valid.
I can add a little bit of that, this, this year will be expanding because of the LUP funding, so you will see it growing where in the past people, yeah, that day might be, might be something
April first, we have a good time for that.
Yeah, prioritizing based on what we're hearing.
It's growing to include all of our students as we start to get effectively, it's, uh, over the years, people have asked for more care and it's coming. So it could be an update on that at that point, if you want to do that, but just to give you a, kind of a heads up on where it's going.
I mean, I, I love the idea of talking more about, um, the dress code, I'm just wondering, I mean, if, if we haven't really had a whole lot of concern from teachers, families, parents. I don't know if we're opening up any more, uh, talks.
What you're saying is we have heard about the after-school program, which we address.
Kind of sharing what's up.
Yeah.
Like that, April first?
After-school?
Sunday's a good time for
Last year, we also heard from parents clearly repeatedly about nutrition services and the wish to get some healthier, less fatty, more, you know, farm to pasture options in there. Yeah, so I think potentially putting dress code, compensation about AI and nutrition service is all on future agendas, just as things we can get, you know, breeder updates on. Just have, have staff prepare, not a whole thing, but you know, twenty-minute Google rec. So we have a group big action, I'm excited if we want to. Make sense.
Yeah, no more policies.
We did a whole thing, wasn't just, wasn't just last year.
So, Tom, with that, and this is new guy question. If you wanted to have a food service conversation at a regular work office, would that be something that a board member would put on, and let's agendaize this and do it, right? Okay, so then there you go, and if you want to do it, so I think
Well, there's, there's ed code mandates.
Put it on the agenda request form and, then if, if it gets agendaized, then we'll have the people come in that need to give you that information and we'll do it.
Yeah.
There's ed code mandates on how often your nutrition
Understood.
committee has to meet and what they have to cover, and it also includes athletics. It's not just food.
It's part of the wellness committee.
It's the wellness.
Yes, which also deals with PE in the classroom and, and some educational competence as well, so that will be addressed in that subcommittee. Yes.
We're all talking AI for, and one more topic that is
Dress code.
Dress code. Okay, sure, yeah.
That's what we're talking about right there.
Well, if you want to put it on the agenda, put it on the request form and we'll do it.
Yeah.
Wellness is different, that will, that's it, we have very specific guidelines we need to follow.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Well, we can always hear the factor more on if any sort of requires.
Absolutely.
If, if, if it comes up, we're curious about.
So on April first, we need board liaisons and I think we'll have some district leads.
I will volunteer for April first.
Okay.
I'd be interested as well.
Awesome. Say that, I'm so sheer.
Pedro, Subuentes, Callan, Quoc, Tennessee. Teunacki. heavily.
He's a
She's the AP, right? She was for a short
Now she raises all the after-school programs, right?
Yeah.
I could have one person. So do we want to just, uh, look at what you got here and see if it's final final and then we'll, you can make a motion and, and go for night?
I think we could change to July eleven one, that isn't worth it.
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
So September third, okay.
Rebecca's gonna hit the MVP, she's doing so much.
And we'll format it, make it look pretty, get all the colors right and all that stuff. Got you. Okay. Do we, are we going to put numbers under these names or do we want to just scrap?
I mean, we had that, I think this last year, two years ago, to keep track how many assignments each person had. We don't, it's something that we need to do there.
We'll have a new update, date on that. All right, and then now we're on the work group side. Just making sure these are accurate.
So, do you want to change the
Actually, if you want to.
Do we, need to change that and put programming or do we just make it up the original name? Gail, Rebecca, you have strong feelings on the radio or not? Not strong feelings? So I'd say, let's, let's just keep the name the same. By the way, there's no freezing. We're good. We good, gang?
We're outstanding.
Indeed, you are. Okay.
We need a new for your senior board member down here on the air.
Is there any public comment, by the way, before we, before we promote on this, anybody want to
Hi, public.
weigh in on this one?
I'm not about to say anything.
Yeah, I know, we're sorry.
Okay. I will say that I want to make sure that we get, um, a special workshop every other year, we don't, this year we'd like to do it this year. But for now, do we have a motion associated with this topic?
Please, Mr. Chairman, could you review what we're voting on?
Yes, um, we are voting on the workshops, presentations and liaisons for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year board meetings. Um, would you like me to read it into the record?
I, I think I got them recorded correctly.
So all of the, so, yeah, the item of consideration is the assignments, liaison and dates for all those workshops. As well as assignments to the standing committees, standing
Uh, the work group standing committees should be a Well, it doesn't have to be, I, I just think it was
As a separate, you thought it would be better as a, as a separate issue?
I'm not, the next one to do, I've got annual presentations. I am not sure I have standing work groups recorded correctly.
Can we go back to the top of standing work groups, to introduce, and just make sure we've got all that right here? Cool.
Okay, keep going.
It is also in the online agenda. That's all I thought.
Community planning is
Community school, community, community school planning is UN member case.
Okay, across all Lando.
Yeah. And then the only other change was that
Those, right.
Self-evaluation.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, in the interest of time, I'm gonna move that we accept these workshops and standing work groups as outlined in the previous conversation.
I seconded.
Okay, we have a motion, Lando, second case, any further debate, please, Tom.
You don't need that.
I don't, I'll be, be talking all day. All right, looks like there's no more debate though. Given that all those, David, it's standardized by saying by, any opposed, say aye? It's unanimous. Thank you. I appreciate the depth, the depth of conversation we have. We'll get, you know.
Conversation's good.
It is. And, um, item eight is item from the floor, are there any more items from the floor? Seeing done.
No, but our floor is still awake, I'm so impressed with them, wow.
I think we were very entertaining.
And we've covered nine already, so I will, um, go ahead and ask whether there is a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those that did adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes? Thank you all very much.
Well done, gang.